Good afternoon. On behalf of Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead, the Commission Manager Fuentes and staff, welcome to the business meeting of the City Commission of the City of Truth or Consequences. Let the record show it is now 4:00 PM on July 24th, Tuesday. Madam Clerk, may I have your call, please?
Honorable Steve Green?
Here.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Here.
Honorable Kathy Clark is out soon. Honorable Ralph Heschler?
Here.
Honorable Paul Baca?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. And may the record show that I spoke to Commissioner Clark about an hour and a half ago. She was on the road somewhere and she was going to try to phone in so she could participate in the meeting. And Juan, Manager Fuentes just texted her to let her know that we've got her on the line. The line's open. The next item is number two, silent meditation. Could you please join me in 15 seconds of silent meditation? The next item is the Pledge Allegiance. Commissioner Baca, could you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is Stand for Motion for Approval of the Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda as submitted for July 24th, 2018.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead and a second by Commissioner Heschler. Any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all who are in favor would be signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item is comments from the public. The three-minute rule applies. If you want to address the public and have a document or any information that you want to be part of the business meeting of the City of TRC, please put it in the black box next to the microphone. Step up, introduce yourself, and the floor is yours. Mr. Fen.
You introduced me. Ron Fen, 316 North Post, TRC. You've all seen the wonderful story on the front page of the Sentinel. Fuentes named Manager of the Year. What the Sentinel did not report, or probably even check, are the real facts. Now, for the rest of the story, as Paul Harvey would have said. City Manager of the Year awards were given at the New Mexico City Manager Association Post-Budget Professional Development Workshop on the final day of the program held in Rudoso on July 11th to 13th. Two awards, one for large cities over 10,000 population and one for small cities under 10,000. The Large City Award likely went to Farmington's Robert Mays, unconfirmed but probable, the only nominee of the 28 cities in that category. Meanwhile, our own Juan Fuentes, recent past president of the association and nominee of Steve Green, was the only nominee of the 157 cities in that category. My question, is such an association worth belonging to at public expense? One that gives an ego award to a manager, entitled at best, for having consistently operated our community with a nearly $2 million a year deficit while covering the shortfalls by looting the enterprise utilities of their repair, upgrade, and replacement funds to the detriment of all residents? Mr. Green, Mr. Fuentes, you have diminished the value of all awards for merit by your actions. Shame on you and shame on all those who believe in you. This was all confirmed with the organization that put on this farce. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the commission?
Hi, my name is Laura Van Dyne. I live at 409 Copra and I am here to ask to comment about the ordinance, number one, for the off-highway vehicles that I believe you're going to discuss later today. I'd like to request that, or I'm hopeful that you will pass this ordinance. I know I, for one, love to go hiking in the desert and my car has definitely shown the toll, so I would like to get an off-road vehicle so I can get to the desert without beating the heck out of my car. I also pick up trash when I'm out there and my car doesn't like that either. So, it's kind of rough on things. So, anyway, I just am for the off-road vehicles in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the commission? Yes, Steve. Why don't you come up, introduce yourself? You have three minutes.
Is there a specific time about the OHV? Is there going to be a time to talk about that or just now?
Now.
Okay. All right. Dean Talk, local resident, president of MOVA. I wanted to voice my support for this as far as the original draft of the agenda, or the original draft of the ordinance, excuse me. As far as the current draft that I've reviewed, I personally would not be able to support that myself. The item in there regarding permits is not something, it's not something that any other community or area does, to my knowledge. I've never been able to find anybody in Colorado, other than the state OHV permit that you have to get through the Department of Motor Vehicles, I've never found anybody that has done anything on a private, on a community-based level as far as permits. I may be wrong on that, this is just what I've found. The second item I'd like to bring up on that permit issue is I'm not entirely sure how the city can charge for a permit to use OHVs on the road. Whenever the state actually licenses these as off-highway vehicles, you're just opening it up to where you can use them on city streets, not state highways or anything. So, I question how we can charge for that. That's one thing that I'd like to bring up. Overall, I agree with this. I think we need to do this as far as a tourism base. We can bring a lot of people in here. I, myself, just got back from riding the Colorado BDR, Backcountry Discovery Route, and riding through places like Lake City and Silverton where OHVs are welcome. And those were in those, the presentation I made to you guys. You wouldn't believe the amount of money that comes through there from that. The whole time I was there, of course, I am a little biased towards OHV, but honestly, I never saw anybody complaining about these razors and four-wheelers being through town. Everybody was acting respectful, everybody was following the law. I did talk to one sheriff in Silverton. He said, "We haven't had hardly any problems," other than the ones that have been on there going up into the Alpine Tundra and acting like idiots. And those guys are being prosecuted very, quite severely. As far as in-town, everybody's been happy with it, everybody loves it. There, there's big signs hanging up everywhere saying, "Welcome." So, I think this is something we need to look at, but I really think you need to deal away with the permitting requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to the next item, which is D, Response to Public Comments. Any response to anything that anyone wants to say up here? Okay. I would just like to continue to read part of the article that Mr. Fen started reading from the Sentinel. And Frances Luna talks about her being a, I guess president is the right word, of Rotary, and then she was proud that Juan was president of Rotary. And then, I want to pick it up where it goes. "The proud moment carried on as I sat at a meeting with him this week and heard him give the credit for his award to his staff and all of their hard work and accomplishments. Not once did he say it was for anything he was responsible for, rather the work of the city staff and their dedication to the residents of Truth or Consequences. We have heard and seen attacks on Juan throughout the past years, but I have to tell you, it has been amazing to watch him grow as a manager, to be humble with his accomplishments and share his success with his employees. It says so much about him as a person and a leader." And that was part of the same article. And Ms. Van Da, thank you for coming. I enjoyed having our email conversations back and forth. I'm glad you could make it. Thank you very much for participating. Appreciate that. The next item, let's, if I don't, if you don't mind?
She's here.
She just came in. I didn't see her come in. Yeah, okay. So, the next item is a special presentation by Representative Rebecca Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. It is such an honor to be here today to celebrate good news about the town of Truth or Consequences. Too often, you guys hear public comment about complaints and potholes, and all those things are important, but today we get to celebrate the accomplishment of our manager, Juan Fuentes, and the team that he has developed and is still growing with the City of Truth or Consequences. And so, I have a proclamation here from the House of Representatives from the state of New Mexico, who learned about this outstanding accomplishment and wanted to send their congratulations. So, in recognition of receiving the 2018 City Manager of the Year award from the New Mexico City Management Association, the New Mexico House of Representatives would like to congratulate you.
Thank you.
Rebecca Dow, Representative Dow, excuse me. Thank you so much. We appreciate it and boy are we fortunate to have you as a homie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you commissioners for all of your volunteer work. I mean, it's, it's a lot of work to serve in a small municipality and I thank you for, you know, you get a lot of phone calls, you get a lot of emails, you get a lot of text messages, and I know you guys are committed to the job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Representative Dow, I certainly appreciate it and I'm honored. And Mayor, as you were there at the ceremony, I just want to echo what I've said and thank you for reading that, because this is truly an honor, not just for me, it might be, and my name might be on the plaque, but it's really for our staff. You know, I think the city's being recognized for the things that we've done and I don't think, regardless of the criticisms that we may get and their public comment, I think some of the managers might have seen those videos online and they said, "Yep, Juan gets it." You know, but I think our staff, as well as the nonprofit organizations, Main Street, you know, the people who organize the Dog Park Rotary, and then you have the business community, the brewery that's downtown, some of the local businesses in the, in the downtown, and of course you as well, Representative Dow, I think we need to recognize that a local is, has had such an impact and influence in the state. So, there's a lot of positive things happening in the city and I don't think our city staff and the public out there should allow the very few and minority to drown the good things that are happening. So, thank you very much for that and thank you, Mayor and commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Juan, for that. And, you know, it's, it's really exciting to get regular phone calls from, from newspapers and from news channels, wanting to know about all the buzz that's happening in downtown Truth or Consequences, and it is truly a community, community effort.
Thank you. The next item is under E2, Presentation of the Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Final Budget. Our presenters, plural, will be our Director of Finance, Ms. Melissa Taurus, and our City Manager, Juan Fuentes. So, I don't know if he's going to start, I guess Melissa's going to start.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners. We're going to walk you through the fiscal budget 2018-19, the final budget, and I'll hand it over to Mr. Fuentes to start the presentation.
Thank you, Melissa. Mayor, Commissioner, so what I'd like to do to start off with the budget presentation, I want to take you all through kind of a process that Melissa and I went through in regards to preparing the final budget. So, what I have before you in the first slide is from preliminary to final. So, what we started doing, and this is the same process we follow at the, every fiscal year, so what we started doing is, as you can see, at the very top, no, I'm sorry, at the very bottom, so let me borrow the laser. I should stand up there. So, I'd like to bring to your attention is at the very bottom, oops, here we go, you have what, you know, what's highlighted in both is general fund preliminary. So, that's what was adopted in May. We estimated our beginning cash balance was going to be about $1,016,000, right, right there at the beginning, and with our investments being at $101,982, we estimated our revenues to be $3,341,888 with a net transfer of $1,271,000. Budgeted expenditures, as you can see, is $5.2 million, and of course you have your DFA reserve requirement, and then, of course, what, what we ended up. So, that's, the $3,758 is what we proposed and we estimated in the preliminary budget. So, then the next step that we do, once we end the fiscal year, is let's go back and start updating these numbers. So, the first step that we did in revision one is, okay, now let's start updating the ending cash balances, which we did, and then let's stop updating the investments, which we did. And if you see on that first, that first row, number one, at the end, you have a shortfall of $266,000, okay? So, then the next step we decided to do, okay, now let's go back and let's start updating the revenue based on actuals as of June 30th, which is the next revision number two. And, and then we, so Melissa went back, revised the revenue estimates, and we were able to close the gap a little bit, so, but we still had about $132,000 to be in the, in the deficit. The next step, we decided, okay, now let's go back and look at our net transfers, hopefully, and we, and some of the net transfers that we did, we, for example, we increased transfers into the general fund, we took $20,000 from the senior grant fund, and we took $50,000 from the lodgers tax. Now, the lodgers tax, it was tied in with the tourism position. So, we, and that was one of the vacancy savings. We eliminated that position and transferred the $50,000 over, as well as some of the, some of the expenditure adjustments, for example, accounting for prior grants and setting fixed budgets for the audit, the IT, the internal control, vacancy savings in the public works department, in the fleet services department, since those two director positions are budgeted at 50% this fiscal year. So, we're trying to save at least the first six months of salary. And then, of course, through the efforts, and we appreciate the chief and his management team to, to allow us to reduce one position, one vacancy from the police department. So, with, with all of those savings, we were able to bring it down to now $132,000 in the positive. So, after we did that and said, "Okay, now, let's go back," and as part of the 2018 town hall meetings that we heard, as well as the commissioners retreat, there were some of the, the two primary, one of the two of the, the top priorities from the commission was review your staff levels and increase salaries to recruit and retain qualified employees. So, and this is, oh, let me go to the next one. There we go. Okay. So, the next one, so in regards to the first question of review the staffing levels, if you can see there, what, what I did is I went back as far as 2004, and the question was that, okay, so what were our staffing levels? And this is for all city employees. So, in 2004, we had 133 employees, and as you can see, over time, those, those employees have decreased. In '06, we had 126, in '08, 126, in '10, 121, and then in '12, 126, '14, 122, and then in '63, 18, 112. We do have some vacancies right now, so that's, that's the latest number. Now, so over time, over the last couple of, I mean, since 2004, there's been a decline in staffing. So, there's all, because, and as you will see, is personnel, as we all know, accounts for the largest expenditure. So, we've been doing more with less, so it's really, in my opinion, it's getting to a point where we, we kind of have met already, I mean, you know, we, unless we automate certain things, it's really hard to continue to decrease without all of a sudden start impacting the services that we're delivering, because as you can see, we've been decreasing personnel over time. Different commissions have had different priorities. There was about maybe two commissions prior, or even one, where their priority was, "Let's wean our staff from the electric division." And how do you do that? Well, personnel was one. So, as a recommendation, they, they were saying, "Well, by attrition, if there's vacancies, boom, reduce those." And as you can see, that probably has been the, the method used starting from 2004, because you can see from 133, we went down to a project at 115. So, as you can see there, some, so that, so we took those positions in the final proposed budget that was published to the public, that you have a copy of. So, what, some of the savings, in the vacancy savings, you have for the tourism director position, that's no longer in the budget. The public works, fleet services director, as stated, that's budgeted at 50%, and then the reduction of the police officer vacancy. So, in, to kind of be able to meet that goal from the commission of increased salaries to retain qualified employees, and especially from the lower-end employees, because we still have employees, some employees who are making less than $10 an hour. So, what we, you know, being mindful of how much money we have, we said, "Okay, what about if we give in addition a 3% for some positions, 3% cost of living increase throughout for all employees?" And for some positions are to be adjusted additionally, some of them have been a dollar, some of them have been only like two, where we adjusted $2 for special circumstances, to try to, but to try to bring the lower-end salaries up as close, as close as possible to the $11 an hour. And also to address any discrepancies created when we do that, because you might have an employee who has, who has been here five years and is making $11.10 an hour, and all of a sudden you bring in somebody who's only making $9 all the way up to $11, all of a sudden the employee who's making $11.10 is going to say, "Hey, that's not fair." So, we took the opinion that, well, let's try to see if we can be as fair as possible. Sometimes it's really difficult to try to be as fair as possible, but that was our shot at it. And so, what you ended up having now with the, with those adjustments is a budget that has, leaves an ending cash balance of $2,000, let me go back, of $2,229.65. Of course, it doesn't leave a whole lot of room for other things that may come up, so hopefully our, our general fund revenues will come in higher. We do need to kind of hold the line and have some controls over the expenditures, obviously, because if we spend all of the money and everything in this top line materializes, then we're going to end up with an ending cash balance of $429. And as I have stated many, many times in prior budget meetings, is that at, you know, we got to start planning how we're going to make budget for next fiscal year, which means that if, if we end up with $429 in the ending cash balance, we actually need $700,000, $800,000 total to be able to approve a similar budget with no increases for the following year. So, I just, and I'm going to come back to that, because I, I feel it's very important to, to repeat that, because we can't forget that we got to start planning for next year, June 30th, even though we're just starting this year. So, that's what's being presented before you and it's what's in the, in the budget that Melissa printed out. So, the next slides and information that Melissa will go over is going to be based on the budget that you have printed out. And then, towards the end of the presentation, I'm going to go back and revisit some of the other options that I had a conversation with the mayor and Commissioner Heschler on some different proposals, and I want to be able to present those at the very end, at the presentation, but so that I don't confuse those options with what we already printed out. Melissa will be covering the rest of her presentation based on the, on the figures that is, right now is the proposed final budget. And with that, is there any questions?
Ms. Taurus, would you rather we hold, if we have any questions, hold the questions to the end? I don't want to interrupt your flow, but if someone has a question, should they ask the question then or wait? What do you think I'm comfortable with?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, I think if my presentation will be highlighting our, from our prelim budget to our final budget, so if we can wait until the end, I think that will be perfect. So, as Mr. Fuentes stated, closing the final budget, our estimated revenue is 3.4 million with an increase of $133,000. We know our GRT was a lot lower than the year before, but if we look at an average year, which is in '15, '16, we really did really good this fiscal year. Also, the final expenditures, we have an estimated of 5.2 million, which was a decrease from our preliminary budget for $43,134. As Mr. Fuentes has stated, one of the big emphasis that we are wanting to share with the city, the city commissioners, and our employees is, as you can see, the trend of what our revenue is to what our expenditures are. And for FY 18-19, as you can see, our expenditures will be at the highest during this 10-year trend, and our revenue is probably, is doing pretty good, but it's, we're, we're looking at almost $2 million of a difference between our revenue and our expenditures. As City Manager Fuentes has stated, at the prelim budget, we ended our beginning cash balance with a prelim of $1 million. We ended the fiscal year with $746,000, which gave us an ending cash balance of $2,229. On our enterprise funds, everything stayed pretty much steady with the exception of the revenues, and that was because of the electric revenues. We went ahead and reduced that than what we had it estimated on the prelim. And then the expenditures, we also increased the expenditures because the electric department has two major projects that will be coming up on this final budget, which is the Sela Vista and then also the solar battery project. One of the things that we definitely want to highlight on our capital and our investments, one of the things that you'll see that is higher estimated than our prelim budget is our investments, and that's because our New Mexico Finance Authority is now calculated as a revenue, and that's something that is required that wasn't done in the past. So, you can see there's a big difference on that. As on the enterprise and the pledge, our inner, their ending cash balance was a little less than what we estimated, so we were less on that side. Again, our investments were higher, our revenue was less than what we predicted on the prelim budget, and our expenditures were a little higher than our prelim budget. And just to highlight again on the general fund revenue, 50% of our municipal taxes is the revenue that we get, also with our state share taxes with a 39%. Closing the general fund revenue, we were higher than what we estimated on the prelim budget, and on the share taxes, we were estimated low than from the prelim budget. Highlighting the general funds, revenues and transfers in, again, 32% is the municipal taxes, transfers in is 35% of the revenue for the general fund, and 26% is the state shared taxes. And to highlight what Mr. Fuentes stated, as you can see on the revenue and the transfers in, you'll see the difference on this fiscal year, which shows the $20,000 from the senior grant, and $50,000 from the lodgers to cover a position. And to highlight the general fund expenditures, 62% is salary and benefits, and again, just a friendly reminder that 4% of our benefits went up this fiscal year. So that was definitely a tremendous jump that we experienced. So the general fund for FY 18 actual budgets, salary last year was 3.2 million, this year is estimated at 3.5 million. Operating this last fiscal year was 1.7 million, and our operating has reduced to 1.6 million. This just basically gives you a reminder, and we also showed this slide during our prelim budget workshop, and it shows that in the past, our debt was $13 million, and as of May 1st, our debt is $8.2 million. And I will hand this over to Mr. Fuentes to go over the projects and equipment.
Thank you, Melissa. And I'll do it from here. Mayor Commissioners, so what I want to go over is some of the projects that we worked on this year. And again, I want to commend staff, I want to commend Tracy Grants Projects Coordinator, Melissa on the finance department, and everybody, our water, wastewater, airports, Mark is out there here in the front, our street department, as you can see, there's a sidewalk project. So these are all the projects that this last fiscal year, either we worked on, we closed, or for the most part, it's just paperwork that's being processed. As you can see at the list of projects, from the animal shelter, wastewater treatment phase one, CDBG, field farm, electric system, NMFA application, unfortunately, we did not qualify, but we still applied. Rodeo Arena Phase Two improvements, soccer field, phase one, SGOA Legislative Appropriations, Broadway Sidewalk Project, swimming pool rehab, the Forge Water Harvesting, the IT Citywide, some of the other projects that happened, I believe, and again, these are all administrative, like the later grant was finally closed, I believe, last fiscal year, Melissa?
Yes, sir.
We also purchased the Vector vacuum truck, thanks to the electric department, I believe, and water contributed part of it, the Vector fogging machine, some electric vehicles, solid waste vehicles, last fiscal year, Andy, USDA equipment, Tracy with, I believe we got the real trailer for the electric department, administrative office rehab, Melissa and with the, and I believe improvements in the utility office as well, so the offices look great. The Mutt Mountain Race Track Improvement, thank you Mark, and Mark, he kind of spearheaded that whole project. And the Elephant Life Minimum Pool, the work group was established. I don't think the minimum pool itself has been established, so, but just the work group. So we got that done, and we continue to do the fund, participate in the 2018 Bus Route Project. So those are some of the things that happened in 2018. Going into 2019, you know, we've expended a lot of the grants, but we still have some, we have the Sims Negative Road we have, the water, wastewater lines around the same. We talked about doing an all-in-one project, water enforcement complex, that's to be determined, wastewater treatment plant, phase two B, will be coming online. We do have a pending application for the water system, with the clean water revolving loan plan, and we're modifying that application. We're still in the process of applying for the water system improvements through USDA. Field Farm Phase Three, hopefully will be completed this fiscal year, the water electric meter AMI, we're still gathering information to bring that back to the commission. Ball field improvements, we continue to make, well, you know, improvements at the Luis Armijo Sports Complex. I think our staff with the leadership of OJ has done an excellent job in taking care of the fields out there. So those improvements will continue to happen. The 2018 LGRF, the art park, thank you Tracy, and I believe in the recreation park as well, they're getting that done. And the ethyl water system, sulfur system, that's going to be happening. As you can see, a lot of them are going to be local projects, and that is because we've expended a lot of our grant funding, and the grant funding takes time. So for example, the Sela Vista Electrical Project, that's local. USDA equipment application, I believe we're going after police vehicles. And the cabota for the parks, solid waste collection center, Andy has been requesting to pay that, the, around the collection center, a new side loader truck, a electric transformer replacement, water well rehab. Bo will continue to replace some of the electrical poles. Public Works Yard improvements, we want to continue with that. We have a new, New Mexico Clean and Beautiful Grant. We have Civic Center ground improvements that we want to make. We have the Veterans Hall. Hopefully, we have two panels that were broken, but they're being replaced, so we'll hopefully have that completed soon. And we're still, I think we need to revisit the TRC School property acquisition. If you all recall, we thought about the acquisition across the SGOA and right next to our water department, and then Plaza Beautification Project, we still want to continue doing that. So those are things that are going to be happening in fiscal year end 2019. So with that, Mayor Commissioners, so what I want to now go back is, as I stated at the beginning of the presentation, is, and that is, so with, you know, after having a brief conversation with the mayor and Commissioner Heschler, they asked, well, it might leave us a little bit too short in the general fund, in the final, so what about a couple of other options? So and one of the other options was, for example, okay, well, what about if we either reduce department heads, cost of living, or some of the others, to try to give us a little bit more room, so that we can bring at the end of the day, the lower end employees up to $11. So if I start from the very bottom, from that page, as you can see, revision number four, department heads receive a 1% cost of living and 2% for supervisors, all other employees 3%, and salary adjustments to bring salaries to $11. The general fund net would be at negative $13,320. That would meet our goal, if the goal for the commission is, let's bring just everybody up to $11. To close the gap now, if we went to revision five, that department heads still receive 1% and all other employees 3%, we would end up leaving 19 positions in the general fund below the $11. But it would, the general fund would net only $6,665. And finally, you have what you have before you, which is the cost of board 3% with the additional salary adjustments. And so, it can either be implemented all at once, this fiscal year, and that would require finding additional $13,320, and approving all of the proposals that were included in here, like the tourism position, the 50% allocation for the fleet and the public works, and those positions, right now, with the assistance of Tracy Johnson, I'm kind of, you know, she's helping me oversee at least the public works side, and she is helping right now with the administrative side on the fleet. But I can tell you that all the supervisors in the street department, and facilities, and in parks, pretty much run themselves. They're doing a great job, so they require very little oversight. But if the commissioners decide to go with one of these options, again, it really boils down to ultimately what is the goal of the commission? Do we move everybody up to 11 with all of these adjustments? Or do we try to just do it in two cycles, in two fiscal years? And pretty much with that, Mayor Commissioners, we will stand. Well, before that, again, want to reemphasize, going back to this chart, and that is because as you can see, the recurring expenses is going to continue to grow, and, you know, if the revenues do not keep up, luckily, we've been fortunate that since fiscal year 09, revenues have increased by 18%, but unfortunately, so has the expenditures by 14%. So, we need to continue to do more to try to increase our revenues, increase our GRT, and that may require additional investments. Staffing levels, as you saw, they have from 133 to now, to 115, or even 112, as we have now. I think that might be, kind of, we're already at the breaking point, because staff is doing more, I think a lot of us are taking on multiple hats. But again, ultimately, it's the will of the commission, how best to proceed forward. So with that, Mayor Commissioners, we will stand. Any questions?
Questions, ideas, concerns, Commissioner Heschler, you were writing like a bachelor. I think this is the great American novel.
Is this the time to raise all the questions? Can we not wait until later on when we bring this up again?
This is under just a presentation, but I certainly speak since it's fresh in our minds right now. We're going to say it now, we're going to say it in the house, and now, let's say it now. That's the will of the commission, if we're as comfortable with that.
Yeah, I have several questions. One, a couple of them, and I guess I'll just dive into this then. You know, one of the reasons that we wanted to allow our employees to have $11 an hour, was so that we could compete fairly with the other major employers in this community, whether it's Walmart, or McDonald's, or State Parts, who all are paying more. And what's happening is, our employment pool, the people that we potentially hire, is dwindling before we even see them. And so oftentimes, and although we have great employees, oftentimes, we don't get the best for the best, and we need to have that opportunity. And so, you know, I'm glad to see that, you know, we are raising some salaries for the lower end, so that we can recruit better people, and hopefully retain them, which would make it more solid for everybody. Another option, I guess I'd want to explore, is how many departments have vacancies that have had vacancies for more than a year? And so, we've had vacancies for more than a year, I think Solid Waste has had vacancies for more than a year, I think Parks has had a vacancy, or vacancies for more than a year. And we had a tremendous year, so I would consider looking at those positions, and absorbing those positions, and perhaps maybe filling them with emergency hire during peak times, or, you know, some type of seasonal, something like that, so that we can have even more cost savings. And what I'm getting at, is that I know that we've got to pay for next year's due, and now's the time we need to start putting money in the bank, so to speak. And that's one way that we could look at doing it. I know that we're taxing our staff, but we're paying our staff more now, and the demand should be higher. And, you know, and I know they work hard, and, but that's what we expect our staff to do. So, I think I'd like you guys to consider that, and look at that just a little bit closer. I'd like to know, Mayor Fuentes, the process of giving out the $1 and $2 raises. How was that done? Was it done with justifications? Did you decide to do it yourself, and figure out how to get it done, and manipulate things? Was it done with the board, or how? How was that arrived?
Sure, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Heschler, so let me address these specifically, there's only two people that got $2 increases, and that's not so much related to this, it's related to what's currently going on with the turnover and the changes happening with the water, wastewater. They're performing way above their jobs currently, and I think it is critical that we retain those employees, going back to your point of why we want to pay higher, because we want to retain qualified employees. And that's the justification for that, and I can certainly go into more detail in private if you wish. In regards to the other, the dollar, because for the most part, I would say 95% of the rest of the employees in the lower end that got $1, we went through each of the positions, and as I stated during the beginning of the presentation, so if we bring, for example, a Parks employee that is making $9.65, all the way up to $11, and you have an employee who has been here five years and is only making $11.10 an hour, it's not fair. So we looked at, how close are they getting? And we made a best judgment call to say, well, maybe this is a little bit too close, and maybe they should deserve a little bit more, so that at least there's some separation there, as opposed to, for example, because the $11 applies not just to every position, even, I think we were even including it for the pool lifeguards, moving them up to $11. And you have employees who are in the street department, who are in the facilities department, who are in the water wastewater, who work out there in extreme conditions sometimes, and are making probably $10.50, and all they're going to be getting 25 cents, or they're making, you know, already $11.05. So it was a judgment call to say, are these kind of, is this fair, you know, to try to kind of be able to give some employees at least something, rather than, for those who are at the higher end, obviously they don't get the dollar, but it was mainly to try to bring everybody up as fair as possible. Obviously, no system is perfect, and if the will of the commission is, we'd like to review all of them and make that call, that is up to the commission, as the Board of Finance. But that's how it was determined. We looked at those positions, and we said, is it fair for somebody who has been here five years, 10 years, to only get 3% because they're already over the $11? And you have a lifeguard or a Parks that all of a sudden gets $4,000. And again, we had a big pushback last year, when we decided, we're going to give $1,000 for people in the general fund, and we're going to give $2,000 from, for people in the enterprise fund, same thing. We want to be able to recruit and retain people in those water, wastewater, solid waste. And I can tell you that that didn't go very well. The intentions were good, but it didn't go very well, because they felt, that's not fair. Why should they get $2,000 and we only get $1,000? And again, we were trying to address, trying to address that issue, is how can we be the most fair? So, that's how it was determined.
I guess I just have one comment to that, and I think it's an okay process. You have an employee that's been here five and a half years, but you bring in, but you have a new employee that's got 20 years of experience, but it may not be with the city. I think you have to look at the 20 years of experience just as hard as you do with the employee that's got five and a half years. Seniority on the job with the city in and by itself is important, but not the only criteria. And I hope we will look, we have looked, or we will look at all those things. Because, you know, if you hire somebody that's 45 years old, and he's been 20 years working for some other city, or in another profession that has experience directly related to the job, we should consider that person for more money, when they come in, as opposed to the person who's been with the city for five and a half years, because we're getting more for what we're recruiting for. Going through the same, I like the, for our future planning, I like the emphasis on local, and getting things cleaned up around town, attaching up with the things that are, that have been maybe deterring a little bit in our community, and focusing on those things. And I think those things sometimes takes our own money, but sometimes they're a little bit cheaper than going out and trying to do some of the other things, so I appreciate Let me defer for now, and get my thoughts back together. If anybody else has any questions, please jump in here.
Michelle Barker, Mayor Poggi.
Well, everything looks good to me.
Okay, I do, just a point of verification. First I heard about this, solar battery project? What's with that? First I heard of it. What's wrong with that?
It's the transformer replacement, sir.
Oh, okay. You said something about, Melissa, I went down 4%. You said something went up 4%. I didn't quite get that. Was that a para?
It's benefits, sir.
Just total benefits, what?
Total benefits, yes, sir. So that includes your insurance, our para.
Okay. So, if I may, I'll just, Manager Fuentes, Director Tarras, so if the commission were to go with revision four, okay? We're in the bucket $13,000. So let's just take, for example, out of our general fund, Main Street, which I know Manager Fuentes has a meeting on Friday with, is applying for a grant, Great Blocks on Broadway grant, and they're going to be looking for $20,000 for the city's buy-in, and they're applying, I think, for $80,000, and it's for FOSH, between Broadway and Main Street. It's a Main Street project. So I guess my question is, if we're in the bucket from the general fund, starting out, and hopefully our revenues just go off the roof, and our spend is, wow, they're compressed, where does that 20 grand come from? I mean, when someone's going to ask the manager, I need a commitment, it might have to come to the commission, I don't know, but of $20,000 for this grant, and we're in the bucket $13,000, where does the $20,000 come from? Or are we trying to be, and I agree with Commissioner Heschler, we've been talking about, and I think all of us have kind of marched to the same drum, of we want A players, we don't want C players, and we've got to pay for A players. I get it, I understand it. So, how do we, how do we, how do we keep a rainy day fund? I mean, this is, this is great, I want to do it emotionally, intellectually, it's great for our staff. The businessman in me says, this is bad luck keeping, you know, you don't start out with a deficit and hope that it's not going to rain. So, how do we, how do we work this? In your opinion, how would we come up with the 20 grand if you're $13,000 in the hole? Where does that money come from?
What I would do is look at your vacancies. What I would do is look at your vacancy savings. Because that is going to be your biggest leap to get the most money into, back into our account. I mean, if you look at an employee who even makes ten dollars an hour, by the time we pay the benefits, it's almost equalling up to thirty thousand. Just that alone. So what we need to look at is, we need to look at the overall of the, of the vacancy savings. For example, Mr. Fuente said, you know, we did six months on the public works. We did six months on the fleet. In my opinion, and this is my opinion, on the fleet director, I would absorb that into the public works. That right there would be a huge leap into the positive direction. Because you're looking at, we're paying a director, director wages, but he's, he's only overseeing two positions. And as time has gone by, as we know, our vehicles are becoming more and more complex. And as our vehicles become more and more complex, we're having to send out our vehicles elsewhere, because we don't have the money to continue to keep up with the technology. I mean, you're looking at, even in the automobile, and I'm sure you know Commissioner Whitehead, they're constantly having to upgrade on a yearly basis, because everything's computerized. And, and you're looking at a high dollar, high dollar thing. Not only that, but you're also having to look at sending your techs into education on a yearly basis, too. So, that would be my personal recommendation, is to look at that position pretty hard, and look at it about absorbing that position.
And if I may, another way of, it really depends on the project.
Okay.
Because depending, for example, this Great Blocks grant.
Right.
If it's a road project.
Yes, it is.
So then you look at, okay, what, what funds do we have out there that we can use? And as Melissa pointed out, it could be through savings, or it could be, can we, do we have room in the street front? But it really depends on the project, and it really depends on what the commissioners are asking of us to say, we want you to do this, we want you to do this. Because then that determines where we might be able to have some resources. And ultimately, if we continue to say, let's look at, or staffing levels, as Melissa pointed out, that is an opportunity right there. And, and that's going to require consolidation, it's going to require, as you pointed out, doing more with less, taxing more. And as you pointed out, even in the general fund, if we have vacancies, do we hold off? For example, last year, I think when some of our departments who had vacancies, you know, and they were vacant for a number of months, it wasn't because they wanted a vacant, or it was because they couldn't recruit anybody. So, and, and we were actually, in some positions, we were paying good wages. And it was just, we weren't getting qualified people. So, but we can, we continue to do those things. But again, realize that the impact that that has, and the snow, the snowball, the snowball effect, because then all of a sudden, the commissioners will get calls and say, Melissa and Fuente are not filling positions, they're holding positions. We're over, overworked, we're overtaxed, da-da-da. But we forget that we have these meetings. And what our goal is for next fiscal year, which is to meet budget for next fiscal year. So, if the commissioners decide to go with revision four, we can accommodate that shortfall. But really depends on the specific projects that the commissioners want us to go after, is that we can identify where is the best revenue source for that project. And, and as stated earlier, you know, I think, I always go back to, to this graph, because the, the more recurring expenses that we have that exceed five million dollars, that means that next year, that, that, that challenge becomes just that much greater. And there's so many vacancy savings that you can have, as, as we said, we went from one thirty-three back in two thousand and four, all the way down to one twelve, one fifteen, in, in two thousand and eighteen. But I think our staff, in my opinion, I think, you know, everybody's pretty much where they need to be. There's not a lot of room, is what I'm trying to emphasize, in regards to staff. We have less employees, but yes, we are paying a lot more than, than probably we were in the past.
Also, just a suggestion. I would love to see where we have the big book, Race Board Division, and Facilities, and Solid Waste, and Art and Jazz. I would love to see how many employees are in each department? How many full-time employees, if you have contractors? Like, I know that there was a gentleman and a woman who were hired as contractors to help with the parks.
Yes.
I forgot their names. So I would like to know, as we move forward, how many people are in each department? How many contractors or part-timers we have? Just so we can, you know, because, actually, I thought we had a hundred and four employees. Now I find out we have a hundred and thirteen, and I'm embarrassed that I didn't even know the right number. But I think that would just kind of help us marry the music to the lyrics. Where do we have one department for five hundred and twenty thousand dollars operating expenses and three, and three people? That might need to be looked at. So, that's, I just thought, I wish I knew how many people are in each, each department. Okay, it's unfortunate that we, I beg your pardon, does anyone else have any questions? It's unfortunate that we don't have Commissioner Clark here, but I'm quite sure she puts her faith in the four of us to do what's right for the budget and, and staff. I mean, it just galls me when I go through these numbers, and I see in twenty sixteen, small city assistance, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. And small city assistance last year, a hundred and thirty-one thousand. For a small community with a general fund budget of three point nine million roughly before we transfer, to lose a half a million dollars from the state that is actually cutting the small communities adrift, as far as I'm concerned, is absolutely reprehensible. Because we can't do what we want to do, and we know needs to be done, we don't have the money to do it. And to take a half a million dollars away from a small community, you don't, you don't pick up a half a million dollars that quickly, I'm sorry. You know, so, I have a hard time getting past that page every time I see six thirty-eight, now it's one thirty-one.
And I just want to bring, one, one last thing, Mayor, Commissioner. You know, Mark is, is, you know, he's moving to Greener Pastures in Roswell, and it's a great opportunity. But also, as, as I stated, you know, we're discussing about personnel, and honestly, that's something that we're still going to need an airport attendant. But we might be consolidating with the other positions to, you know, so we're always looking at those opportunities. Another change that's occurring, of course, as you all know, is Jesus, Water, Wastewater Director's retiring. But we do have another candidate that will be joining us pretty soon. He might review, evaluate the, the departments, just as Chief Adigone is doing. And he might request, well, we might need more, more staffing because of all these issues we're having out there. So, know that there's still things that may come back to the commission. Because we're still going to continue to address the issues out in the community. This is just, at least, you know, to get us approved the budget, we know where we're going, but we may come back to the commission and say, we might have to amend certain budgets, to address some, some issues.
And we're not touching the rainy day fund at all? The money that's in the bank?
What do you mean?
I think we have, I thought we had close to ten million dollars or something like that. I thought I heard someone talking about it. I mean, where are all our CDs and...
Well, those are all within the enterprise, within, for example, Electric has its own investment.
Right, okay.
There's some other investments that belong to the solid waste.
Right.
The general fund has only a hundred thousand dollars.
But so we're not touching those, and all those?
No, 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 I mean, unless, for example, Andy, he's requesting a side loader.
Right.
He's going to pay it out of his own funds.
Okay.
Wastewater's going to improve, you know, water's going to make some improvements on the, on the wells. It's going to come out of their funds. So, infrastructure money, that's where the bulk of the money is, is in the enterprise funds. And that's where a lot of them are drawing down, to make improvements on the system.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a comment.
Sure.
You know, after listening to all of this, I'm just hoping that when we're doing our vacancy savings, that we're making sure that we don't fall into a rut, where we use this vacancy savings to offset a grant, a grant match for a project, when we've got a lot of things in our community that need renovation, such as infrastructure. And, you know, I've had a lot of calls, you know, it's hot, the electric goes out, the water lines, you know, there's water leaks here and water leaks there. So I hope, I hope that we're smart, and, you know, we're making sure that we're taking care of our employees, and making our employees comfortable and happy, so that they will do a great job for our community, rather than, you know, looking at, well, we've got a vacancy here, so now we're going to, you know, give this employee two hats to wear. And then we're, we're kind of lacking in other parts of our community, because everyone has seen what has happened around our community lately, and the improvements, and, and where we need to improve. So again, I just hope that we're not robbing from Peter to pay Paul.
And Mr. Mayor, and Mayor Protem Whitehead, and I think those are good comments, and that's why we want to, we want to kind of put it all on the table. And throughout the fiscal year, because we hear, on one end, you know, as you pointed out, we definitely don't want to overtax in too many hats with one employee. But on the other side is, but, because you need the money, hold off on the vacancy savings. So it's, it's a double-edged sword.
Right.
And, and it's, our job sometimes is difficult to try to accommodate what one commissioner may, may see as, this is the, the direction you should go, and another commissioner saying, wait a minute, but you're overtaxing staff. So it's, that's always the, the challenge, to try to be able to make everybody happy. And at the end of the day, sometimes it doesn't really work. Because, you're right, you know, it feels it, but our job is, how do we get the next year's budget approved? That's always been number one priority. And we had a conversation earlier today about, well, because that is the, the, the budget that the commissioners approve, if the commissioners say, let's go with revision four, and the revision four is an expenditure budget of five point two million dollars, is that, is that, the commissioners are saying, spend, if, you know, we are authorizing you all to spend five point two million dollars? Or is the commission saying, we authorize five point two, but we give the, the finance director and the manager the discretion to, to say, save money, because you've got to approve next year's budget? You see what I'm saying? Because it goes back to what you're saying, and what, but unfortunately, it may contradict with what other comments are being made about vacancy savings, do more with less. You know, we're getting mixed messages. And, and I think throughout the fiscal year, we might come back to the commission and say, how do we, how do we best proceed? But definitely by the third quarter, we need to decide, do, do we start now cracking down on, on the expenses? Because usually, sometimes we use our own discretion, but as you can see, sometimes that even creates issues among staff, and... Yeah.
Well, that's just a comment that I thought we need to, to look at and observe, you know, where we go from here.
Sure.
And again, you know, I always like to come back at midterm, and look at where we're at, and where we came from, and where we're going. I mean, it's not getting any easier and any better.
That's right.
And I know, you know, last year, we gave a lot of, a lot of subrecipient grants, you know, just kind of... So, I hope these people will, will come back and look, well, you know, they were generous to us this year, let's kind of look, you know, look where we need to go for the following year. You know, I mean, you have to, you have to look at sharing the, the finance, at least until we figure out, you know, where we need to be.
And I think that's a great point. And that's one thing where it's already increased on the subrecipients, and we're already in the hole. So by the time we are budgeting for the next fiscal year, we're in that hole for that subrecipient, you know, that we have to look at.
And Mayor, Mayor Protem, I think as Melissa pointed out, one of the things that we talked about is maybe changing when those allocations are made. And maybe rather than doing them in the preliminary budget, doing them in the final. Because then, there's, there's a little bit more sense of, hey, you got to share in the pain. Because a lot of times, sometimes at the preliminary, we may be a little bit optimistic, but then at the end of the day, as you, as you saw, we thought we were going to end up with a million dollars, and we ended up with seven hundred thousand dollars. Well, they already got their allocation, so now we have to figure out, well, we got to find it somewhere else. So if they're part of the final budget process, it might kind of also open their eyes to, it's not like we don't want to award any, any stuff, it's just that we have to, you know, you know, we have limited resources.
Thank you, good point. Any other questions? Thank you, appreciate it. We'll see you in a while. The next item is consent calendar. I will need a motion for approval of the consent calendar, which consists of the city commission regular minutes of June twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, the impact key board minutes of June eighteen, twenty eighteen, the public utility advisory board of June eighteen, twenty eighteen, turn the page, even, public arts advisory board minutes of April seventeenth and May fifteenth, twenty eighteen, authorization to open separate interest-bearing account with first savings for all stale checks collected by the city of truth or consequences. And the last one, which is an amending of a resolution, so we will ask for a roll call after we have approval of the consent calendar. Amendment to resolution number thirty-eight, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, revising the surplus property auction list. And that was right on the first line of that, of that document. So I will stand for motion.
Mr. Mayor, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to take item on the consent calendar F-one through F-five, and I move that those be approved, as noted.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Whitehead, I need a second.
One second.
Second by Commissioner Bachar, any further discussion? Hearing on, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, parried unanimously. Now, we will deal with six.
Mr. Mayor, on the consent calendar item F-six, I move for approval of resolution number thirty-eight, to, the amendment of resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, revising the surplus property auction list, exhibit A, as submitted.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Whitehead, and a second by...
I'll second that.
Commissioner Bachar, any further discussion? Madam Clark, can we have roll call, please?
Honorable Steve Gray?
Yes.
Honorable Senator Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Heschler?
Yes.
Honorable Kepi Quirk is absent, Honorable Paul Bachar.
Aye. Thank you. Next item is G-one, under ordinances, resolutions, and zoning, discussion action. Ordinance number six-nine-seven for publication, amending the code to allow the operation of recreational off-highway vehicles and all-terrain vehicles on maintained streets or roads owned and controlled by the city of truth or consequences. Attorney Jay Ruhl, please.
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. As you know, it's been on the agenda the last couple of meetings, and I knew you were expecting me to put something together in form of an ordinance for us to consider, which is what we've done here. The way I did this is, I know it's been in your packet the last couple of meetings, the copy of the Simark County ordinance. So I used that as a guide, kind of as a template. But I didn't stop there, because I've been going through the county ordinance, there were some changes in the state statute, which I felt was appropriate to include, particularly some provisions of section fifty-six dash three dash one oh one one. So I think it's kind of a form of a redline version, you know, it's like basically the county template with the changes, which I'll go through here, just, just a moment. So that's, we, also, Mr. Tolk, he came to my office, he was helpful also to point out some things that he saw from the recent changes in the state statute, and that was very helpful. Thank you very much, sir, for, for your assistance. Okay, so looking at the first page, the purpose, section one, the purpose of this ordinance is to allow the operation of recreational off-highway and all-terrain vehicles on maintained streets, roads, or highway owned and controlled by the city of truth or consequences, as authorized in this ordinance. Section two gives definitions, and these came directly from the state statutes. There's a definition of all-terrain vehicle, and a definition of recreation, recreational off-highway vehicle. And I don't know if I need to go into much detail about this. I see on the recreational off-highway vehicle, number one reads, a recreational off-highway vehicle is a motor vehicle designed for travel on four or more non-highway tires, recreationally used by one or persons, and having, and then there's all this, the things that the vehicle must have. Section three is the operation of recreational off-highway vehicle or all-terrain vehicle on maintained streets or roads owned and controlled by the city. Paragraph A indicates that persons shall not operate an off-highway motor vehicle on, number one, unlimited access highway or freeway at any time. Two, paved street, except as provided subsections B, C, D, E, F, and G below, which we'll get to in just a moment. Letter B, a recreational off-highway vehicle or all-terrain vehicle may be operated on a maintained street or road owned and controlled by the city of truth... a maintained street or road owned and controlled by the city of truth or consequences. And then there's seven things that are listed here, and let me just mention, make a couple observations here. Number one reads the vehicle, excuse me, number two, reads the vehicle has brakes, mirror, and muffler, that should be mirrors, that should be plural. Number three, the way I draft it says the operator has a valid driver's license, instruction permit, or provisional license. Looking at the state statute, after I submit this for, to the clerk's office, the state statute is slightly, is worth slightly different, it reads the operator has valid driver's license or permits as required under the Motor Vehicle Code and off-highway motor vehicle safety permits as required under the Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Act. So if we decide to go to publication, I will get together with the city clerk, and I'll give you the, you know, the change there. Number four and number five are, again, from state statute. Number six was also from state statute, I wanted to mention this because it was not in the county ordinance. At the operator's under 18 years of age, the operator is wearing a safety helmet that complies with the Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Act. And number seven comes directly from state statute 66-3-1010.2, and reads, "A person under the age of 18 shall require to successfully complete an off-highway motor vehicle safety training course for which the person shall have parental permission. The course shall be conducted by an off-highway motor vehicle safety training organization as approved and certified by the department. Upon successful completion of the course, the person shall receive an off-highway motor vehicle safety permit issued by the organization." Paragraph C is, again, taken from state statute, and just talks about off-highway motor vehicles may cross streets or highways, which is standard language. And then I think D and E again, yeah, D, E, F, and G all from state statute. Let me make a comment about G, because that is something that the mayor was helpful when we had our meeting yesterday going over the agenda. The way the state, the statute reads, it says, "The state allows the state to establish speed limits and operating restrictions for all highway vehicles. Speed limits shall be defined as, shall be as defined below." Number one reads, "The speed limit for all-terrain vehicles operating within the city shall be 35 miles per hour or the posted speed limit, whichever is less. If the posted speed limit is higher than 35 miles per hour, the operator shall operate the all-terrain vehicle on the extreme right-hand side of the roadway." And then it goes on to say, "The speed limit for recreational off-highway vehicles, ATVs, operated within the city shall be 45 miles per hour or their posted speed limit, whichever is less." Pointed out to me that we don't have streets here that are more than 25 miles an hour, except for maybe one, one or two places, so I'd be okay if you wanted to strike the language of saying, is it 35 miles an hour or the 45 miles per hour, and just go with the fact that it's a posted speed limit. I think we'd say the same thing, anyway. Section four just talks about exemptions, which really aren't really terribly applicable, but, you know, I guess, again, by state statute, we kept it in there. Number five, I guess, is the one, is the provision that Mr. Tolk was talking about during his public comment. I was told that I should be including this provision regarding permits, because we have similar language in our golf court ordinance, so I put it in there. And it reads basically the same with the golf court ordinance, except, of course, I changed golf carts to ATV and OHV. You heard a comment from Mr. Tolk, and I know, Mr. Blath, you wrote me an email, and I know that you had some concerns about this, and certainly, if the commission wants to hear from, that's, that's, that's fine, but I couldn't, and you actually told me to put it in there, and if you want to have it in there, and I understand your reasons for oversight, that's understandable also, so that's something, I guess, for us to discuss. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions, concerns?
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Tolk for coming and bringing this to our attention, because I also have some concerns in that regard. And one of the concerns is, is how do we deal with out-of-town folks that bring their ATVs to this community on a weekend and not even get a permit? Or how do we deal with our sister cities or the county who may not issue permits, but they, we want their folks to come to our community, you know, we have to issue them a permit? So I'd like to understand how, how we would work that into the system, and might it be better just not to even have a permitting process?
And that's something for you to decide. I suppose with the, if people are aware that this ordinance exists, and that they have to get a permit before the weekend, I guess, is the only answer I can give on that, but, yeah, I understand that's a concern.
Yeah, unfortunately, Commissioner Hasler's point, it's not like you can go to the gas station and sign it and get the fishing license. You know, I think that if we are going to proceed forward with this, it doesn't make any sense for us to make T or C a almost walled community from folks who are participating out in the county, or, I assume, Attorney Rubin, again. I noticed that there was Sierra County here, and it was crossed off, and we just put in City of T or C. Do we know for a fact if Elephant Butte, or maybe Dean or Mark can answer this question for us, do, has Elephant Butte adopted the county's version of this? I mean, either, because the three of us, I think for this to work and not to give the chief, actually gray hair prematurely, that we've gotta be in lockstep with our neighbors and what they're doing. So can you help me with that? Does Elephant Butte have permitting, and are they mirroring exactly what the county has done? If you could just come up with, a little bit unusual, but you have the expertise and I don't.
Yes, Mayor Green, commissioners, Elephant Butte has their own ordinance. They actually adopted this prior to the county adopting theirs. At this time, they do not have any permitting issues. They don't, they explored that, but realized that that was not going to work out very well, and it was gonna be a huge inconvenience on the city staff and on law enforcement to try and make sure everybody had this little piece of paper. So they just deferred it to New Mexico Department of Motor Vehicles to license those for off-highway reviews and left it at that.
So then how do we get to the people who are coming in from out of the area? How do we get the fact that your vehicle has to have brakes, mirrors, and mufflers? How do we get, how do we disseminate that information? Do we just notify all the clubs, put it up on our website? I mean, because the chief and his team, they're gonna enforce the rules and laws of T or C.
Correct. Well, they're, they're going to, I'm sorry to interrupt, but they're, they're gonna have to enforce also state law as well.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, yeah, that's the answer, actually. That, that's exactly from state statute, so that's uniform.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, they're required to have this for state law period, so, yeah.
All right, so, okay, so thank you, so.
No problem.
So, Mr. Rubin, I know I brought this up yesterday at our city, at our pre-meeting, but I'm still, I have a hard time wrapping my hands around B7, a person under the age of 18. So let's say you have a child who's a mature kid, 12 years old, and they can take this safety class, and so you are comfortable with them riding out somewhere in the county, but because they take this class and pass it, they still have to have a valid driver's license and be of age.
Correct.
So I don't quite understand what this, a person under the age of 18 shall be required to successfully complete, I don't understand how that ties into what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, if, if you're under the age of 18, you have to comply, you know, just like anybody else, you have to comply with all these provisions. If you're under the age of 18 specifically, though, you have to comply with three and seven, meaning you have to have a valid driver's license.
Right.
But you also have to complete this course, so, I mean, you, you wouldn't, a 12-year-old would not be able to take this course, and would not qualify for this provision anyway, because they wouldn't have a valid driver's license.
But it says a person under the age of 18 shall be required, so if you're under 18, you don't have a valid driver's license.
You can't, yes. You have to get them at 16.
Yeah, driver's license, ages 15 or 16 is.
16.
Yeah, New York was 18 when I was growing up, back in the day. Yeah, okay, so that's that, yeah, okay. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If I might interject just a little bit on the permitting.
Yeah.
Since, since you brought it up, and since the revised ordinance came out, I was talking with my staff on how we could properly, we handle the golf cart permits.
Right.
So how we could properly handle this to where, you know, we can make sure it's on the website, we can, if there is a big event, like we had with the desert outlaw racing, we discussed, you know, taking turns maybe early in the morning to sign them up if we had to. We figured, we could probably figure out a way, but I also wanted to add, he said that he doesn't know if a municipality can charge a fee for them. We don't charge for a golf cart permit fee. So at this point, we don't have a fee in place to charge for this one either, if we did it. So it would be more work on staff, we could work it out. If they come just for the weekend on their own and not attached to any event, maybe we could work it out where the police department says, hey, next time we come into town, you can do this.
So if it's a state law that they have to have certain safety things on the vehicle, the machine, and if we're not charging for permits, why do we even need to deal with permits?
We really don't, it's just, we reminded the city attorney to include that portion because we brought it up three times.
No, and I understand that, because I appreciate that, but I think what this is kind of learning as we're moving forward.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, and I think we, my personal opinion is, we should delete that whole thing about permitting. And, and put some information up on our website, and appropriate, wherever Dean tells us and can guide us, to send out, hey, we're ready for you now, here we got, we got our ordinance, and, you know, so let's, to me, to go through all these machinations and not have to work with the city and develop more revenue and expose our community is nonsensical. So let's, if we're gonna do it, let's do it, let's do it well, and use as a merchandising tool, I think, Dean, you mentioned the word terrorism, to bring more, to more, bring people here. So that, that was my only thing. The only thing, so, chief, I'm visiting one of the store, the store owners on Friday, and I am talking to her, and I see a truck that's parked on Broadway. He pulls out into the middle of Broadway, there's no other car coming, he probably either slammed on the brake or put it into neutral and floored the gas pedal. And the sound, that was, it was unbelievable. I mean, it woke up the whole neighborhood. Now, the only, the only negative I have heard on this whole thing is the sound, the mufflers, that they're gonna rev their engines, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. How do we, how do we, how do we deal with that? How do we let them know, to Dean's point, to be good citizens, to be respectful of our community and the citizens who are here already?
We have, Mayor, we have another one, it's, we've, one thing that's terrible, right, this guy's driving, doing, he did.
Okay.
And if we just take enforcement, or if you have the tag number, we deserve to talk to the individual.
Okay.
Might be a good idea to do that.
Yeah, I, I don't want us to be, here to be hardasses about this, but we also, we wanna invite new people to come in the community, but we have a responsibility to protect 6,500 people who are here already, you know, so that's the balance.
Do we have an ID on Google ID?
Uh, no, I didn't, I wasn't quick enough to get the license plate, but next time I saw, I mean, it was, it was rilcus, let me tell you. Okay.
Yeah, piazzle with that version, we can find it.
Okay, thank you. I know what the truck looks like, so I will be on the lookout for it. Interesting paint job. Any questions, any concerns?
One final question.
Go ahead, sort of, of course.
So the way I understand it, the person under 18 wants to be able to drive a vehicle, they have to have a driver's license. How does a driving permit work in this regard? And it's a driving permit, obviously isn't a license, so a person that's 15 years old wouldn't be able to qualify, is that correct?
Right. The, and actually, yeah, the, and that's, that's the language I have to change in paragraph three. The state statute, as I had mentioned, reads, "The operator has valid driver's licenses or permits as required under the Motor Vehicle Code and all five motor vehicle, safety permits as required under the Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Act."
So when it says or permit, permits, then technically, a person that's 15 that has a driving permit could be operating an ATV or an ATV.
With an adult.
I think they need an adult.
With an adult.
I think you have to have an adult, if I'm not mistaken. And they can't drive at nighttime or something like that, or whatever.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
With an adult.
Well, this is basically, we're gonna need a motion. I think whoever makes that motion should delete the stuff that really does not enhance this, it actually takes away from what we're trying to accomplish. And this would just be a motion for, for publication, which means it's not gonna be poured in cement, it's gonna be brought back in the pot, we'll have an opportunity, we'll have a, a public hearing, probably on this, and, and to voice their, any concerns or their support of this. I would personally like to move this forward.
Mayor Green, I'd like to move that we approve ordinance number 697 for publication, amending the code to allow the operation of recreational off-highway vehicles and all-terrain vehicles on main, maintained streets or roads owned and controlled by the city of truth or consequences. And also to revise or remove section 5A and B, which alludes to the permitting process with that revision.
Excellent. I have a motion by Commissioner Hasler, second by.
I'll second.
Commissioner Bacher. You should have seconded, you're the one who brought this to our attention. I was expecting you to make the motion, Commissioner. So we have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
I would just like, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to see that once this is published, once we approve it, and once this is enacted, act, enacted, that we come back and visit it at a later date, and make sure that everything is kind of running smoothly, that we don't have any problems, that the public's not complaining, and, you know, if we need to revisit the ordinance, then we can do so and add whatever might need to be added at that time.
Sure. Excellent. And I think from what I have heard from Dean and Mark and some of the conversations that we have had in the past about this, is that we really do have an opportunity here, and, and these clubs are looking for a place to recreate and to have adventures and things such as that, and hopefully that they will be respectful of, as visitors, that we are inviting them to use our land and have some fun in our community, out in the county, and it will work well. But I agree with you that this is the first time, and we'll keep it up the advisement as we move forward. Okay, all those then in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries unanimously. Attorney Rubin?
Yes.
Mark Blath, Dean, thank you, talk, thank you for your efforts in working with staff and bringing this to our attention. I think the future could be very bright for us, so thank you for that. Number two, G, discussion action, resolution number 021819, fourth quarter financial report. My presenter is Melissa Torres, Finance Director.
Good afternoon. This guy's need it?
Yeah, I think.
The city. The financial report is going over the fourth quarter. Just to remind her that at the end of the fiscal year, our financial report.
A momentary battery change for all you out in the radio land. You haven't lost the connection.
To close the fourth quarter, our financial should be at 100%. I will highlight areas of the fourth quarter. At the general fund, on the revenue, we ended with 94%. Expenditures, we ended with 91%. Special revenue, revenue we ended at 75%, expenditures at 54%, capital projects at 22%, 32% of expenditures. Utility office, revenue 153%, expenditures 106%. Electric department, revenue at 96%, expenditures at 98%. Water, revenue at 94%, expenditures at 89%, wastewater at 98%, expenditures at 89%. Solid waste at 106%, expenditures at 82%. Golf course, revenue at 56%, expenditures at 107%. Cemetery, 145%. Cemetery, 145%, expenditures 89%. Airport, revenue 128%, expenditures at 106%. On our special revenue fund, to highlight, our lowest is the recreation fund revenue at 35%. Please note that that's not a self-revenue-generated fund. Corrections, we ended with 140%, and that was due to more of citations and filings were filed in municipal court. The Veterans Wall at 41%. As Mr. Fuentes stated, we're at the close-in, which carried over until this fiscal year. The R and R Airport, which we completed Phase Two in last, this fiscal year, which will be carried over into this new fiscal year for Phase Three. And the CDBG, we closed it out in July. The GRT, a five-year comparison, we ended the fiscal year with $3 million with a deficit of $639,000. As you can see, last year was 3.7 million. Our lodgers tax, we ended the fiscal year with $267,000, which was higher than last year by 8,300. Our general fund expenditures, Governor and Body, 99%, Clerk's Office, 94%, Municipal Court, 91%, City Manager's Office, 96%, Finance, 100%, Fire, 100%, Police Department, 92%, Codes Enforcement, 96%, Recreation, 83%, Community Development, 90%, Streets, 89%, Fleet, 94%, Facilities, 81%, Library, 95%, Hospital GRT, 64%, Utility Office, 106%, Electric Division, 98%, Water, 89%, Solid Waste, 82%, Water and Wastewater, 89%, Golf Course, 107, and Airport, 106%. And again, this is the graph that you guys continue to see, that we are emphasizing in our general fund of our revenue and expenditures. We ended the fiscal year with a revenue of 3.5 million, and our expenditures were 4.9 million with a difference of 1.4 million. And I stand for any questions.
Questions? I have a question, and I think it's probably unanswerable. How do you like that, Colonel Whitehead? Is there any way that we can go and find out from Santa Fe, not by companies, but by industries? I mean, to take a hit of, to go from 3.7 million, 2016, 2017, to 3 million in 2017, 2018? I would like to know for my own peace of mind, was it the build-out of the Alzheimer Wing, where we had all these workers here, and that's why they were spending a lot of money, and we were getting more GRT? And if you, you know, Melissa, if you look at 2016, 2017, they're damn more, they're, they're, they're darn near, sorry, more months of 300,000 plus. And in February, in fiscal year 17, 18, there is only one year, one month, and that's only 301,000. So something was going on. And, you know, I'm wondering if we're able to find out what, what industry, because maybe that's where we should take a look at and try and do more of that, whatever it might be. I mean, is that possible? Can we get a printout from DFA by Industries on reporting of GRT to find out what caused this amazing bump last month, and we went right into the tubes this year?
Yes, sir. And to answer your question, Mayor, Air Pro Tem Commissioners, as you recall in our pre-lan presentation, that was one of the requests by Commissioner Clark. And we did, we did an analysis of our GRT and where the shortfall was coming from. And it was definitely under the construction side of it. So we can update that report that we did and then submit that to you, sir, and the Commissioners, if that's what you wish.
Yeah, I would like the Commissioners, I'd like to see that, I mean, because it's, it's, it's a house of cards that's built on no foundation. You know, we can't run a city on construction, on major construction jobs, because how many 25 million dollar construction jobs can a small community absorb and have? So, I mean, I think last year, it presented an unrealistic number to us that we might have gotten a little bit wild with expenses, to Mayor Pro Tem's point, and being so generous with subrecipients and things such as that, that, you know, because the year before, it was 3 million, and then it jumped up to 3.7 million. Now it's back to 3 million plus a few thousand, I'm not, 81,000 is not a few thousand, but you kind of get the idea. So maybe in the future, we should take a look at 15, 16, and 17, 18 as the model and figure that's what our GRT really is. And then anything that should come down the pipe to the good, well, aren't we lucky and we smile a lot? But otherwise, I think we're gonna be in a, you know, in a world of heartburn, I think, down the road. So, any other questions or concerns? All right, so I will need a motion, I beg your pardon, turn to the right, Commissioner Buck. Okay. I need a motion for approval of this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 021819, Fourth Quarter Financial Report, as submitted and presented by Melissa Torres, our Finance Director.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead and a second by Commissioner Heschler. Any further discussions? Here, now, Madam Clerk, for your roll call, please.
Honorable Steve Green?
Yes.
Honorable Senator Whitehead?
Yes.
Honorable Ralph Heschler?
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark is absent. Honorable Paul Buck.
Yes.
Carrie Janamislee, thank you very much. Um, oh, I was just gonna say, don't sit down. Number three, Discussion Action Resolution Number 031819, approving the fiscal 28, fiscal year 2018, 2019 final budget. Ms. Torres.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, as you know, during the presentation that Mr. Fuentes and I gave you guys, and your guys' final budget that you guys received, we're respectively asking you guys if this is the direction you want us to go into, or is there revisions, as Mr. Fuentes presented, which was Revision Four and Five?
Now, this is why we get paid big bucks, Commissioners, your opinions. If I may ask, of course, this is...
Mr. Fuentes is there?
Any more room with vacancy savings, as I discussed, for those positions that have been vacant for more than a year? Absorbing those positions and then going with across the board 3% quota for our employees? Or is that, is my hope, are my hopes too high, or what, what do you suggest?
Which, which option are you looking at?
Revision Four. I'm actually, yeah, that, yeah.
So the one that...
Max, right, everyone brought up to a million or...
Eleven dollars, right?
Okay. That's, so that would put us theoretically in an imperfect world at a negative in the general fund.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner Heschler...
And remember, Mayor, that to fund it, I'm asking, those vacancies, that we've had vacant for more than a year. If we haven't filled them in a year, I'm questioning if we really need to fill them. And if we can't, would be, would be better than to go ahead and fund it with staff.
Well, we do have some vacancy savings, some vacancies right now. And this is, the Revision Four number, it's mainly focused on the general fund. The others will be able to, so we can't take a vacancy from the water, wastewater, solid waste, and apply it over here. So, but with that said, that shortfall there, if the Commissioners' will is to go with Revision Four, we can accommodate that. We'll, we'll figure out, you know, we can close that gap. You know, whether it's through extending the, one of the department head's vacancies further on out. But of course, obviously, recognizing that it's adding additional duties, responsibilities to somebody, recognizing compensation for that individual, whatever that may be. So we, but we can, I can, we can accommodate that, and that would have to be internally. And that's why a lot of times, we ask for that flexibility from the Commissioner to allow us to make adjustments as we go along, if, if we need to. Because we're trying to accommodate what we hear from the Commission, and a lot of times, it's really difficult if you don't have that flexibility to be able to act and proceed forward. So if the wish of the Commission is to go with Revision Four, I'm very confident that Melissa and I can, can, can zero that out so that we can get it approved by DFA. And they'll monitor it as we go throughout the fiscal year. Maybe at midpoint, if things improve, we can come back and revisit, okay, what things do we need to make a priority again? But it's not a big number. We, I think we can, we can close the, we can zero it out.
So I was just gonna say, so you can't show a budget to DFA with the deficit in the general fund?
That's correct.
You have to be very creative between now and when this has to be up in Santa Fe to make up 13,000.
Yeah, look, like I said, I think that's, it's not 100,000 dollars, which is, which is a lot better. It's only 13, yes, 13, but we can, we can accommodate, I think, between Melissa and I, we can put our heads together and we can close that gap, again, but with that flexibility, of course, from the Commissioner.
Yes, absolutely. Commissioner, I see you answered my question. Are you opposed?
I just wanna make sure that we, that we stay focused and that we don't let anything slip by and get away from us, and, you know, that people don't come back and scream at us, you know? I mean, again, I like to see happy employees. I like to see prosperous employees, and, and I think this'll work. But we can't lose our focus of where we're going as a city and as a community.
Now, Commissioners, with that said, you know, and again, I bring that up, if, unless it's otherwise specifically approved or other, or stated by the Commission, we'll continue operating as we have, kind of having that flexibility to address things as they come up. If there's a vacancy savings, hold up, hold up. Being conscious, obviously, about the impact that it may have on a department or, or operation. So it's kind of, trying to kind of manage that to the best way as possible, keeping in mind the wish, the wishes of the Commission. So it's always like a double, double-edged sword that we have to deal with. So with that flexibility, I think we can manage the budget.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would like to also make a comment that, as to that comment that Manager Fuentes made, that I hope he uses his discretion as to making sure that our employees don't get overwhelmed with what they're doing so that we can have this cost savings. I hope you will stay on top of that and make sure that our community and our city continues to function properly and things get taken care of and fixed.
Mr. Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem, I understand that, and I hear you.
Thank you.
I look, I look to you right, and I hear, and I, and I hear that as well. So, so yes, that's why we need the flexibility. Thank you.
Any further concerns or questions? I will stand for a motion.
Okay, let's see. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor Green?
Yes.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 31819, approving the FY 2018-2019 final budget, as presented by Manager Fuentes and Finance Administrator Melissa Torres, and include Revision Four in this resolution.
I have a motion by Commissioner Heschler.
And I will second that motion.
And I have a second by Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead. Is there any further discussion? Two things. I want to thank both of you. It's a hard task squeezing Four and dividing and make work into Three. And I know that sometimes the Commission makes your life a little bit hard. Commissioner Heschler's point and my point about these eight players, I have always wanted to see that you feel proud to be part of the TRC team, that when you put on that uniform and go out and do the best you can, eight hours a day, five days a week, 50 weeks a year, whatever it might be. I want our jobs to be sought after, that because if you lose it, you can't get a similar job that's gonna pay as good with the Bennys that, that we produce here. So I think what we're trying to do is we're trying to accomplish to keep our staff and retain staff, have the manager with some flexibility to attract quality employees. But I think also, staff has to understand that this is an excruciating, painful budget to deal with. I don't know if you heard on the radio this morning, but everyone's been talking about the state's gonna be awash in money because oil was $77 a barrel. Guess what? As of an hour and a half ago, it closed on the spot market at Oklahoma. And I know Senator John Arthur Smith knows this, at $66. We don't know what's gonna happen with the Straits of Omaha. There's a lot of things that we don't know with this state. And I, for one, appreciate the efforts and the effort that we are asking of our staff and our supervisors and our directors as we move forward. Hopefully, there'll be more sunshine over the hill. We gotta get over the hill. And we are asking staff to do more, and we're trying to reward that more as best as financially feasible and still run a financial business here of the city of TRC and not put generations in hock and debt because we felt it's the right thing to do. It is the right thing to do. But it's a teamwork and it's a partnership between staff, the manager, the Department of Director Finance, the supervisors, and your fellow citizens. Because we're all, if one succeeds, we all succeed here. If one fails, guess what? We all fail. So I want to thank you. This is not an easy time. It's never a joyous time. And I look forward to, I look forward to looking at the numbers. I know in a real world, but a profit world, what I love to do, and we can't do it. But at least Commissioner Heschler, I appreciate his beating this drum since last year about bringing up some of the lower wages, that we don't lose people to some of the other businesses in town because you gotta feed your kids. When you're 25 years old, you don't really think about benefits. You think about the payroll, the paycheck, and I can buy my formula for my baby. That's what you think about. And we have to be aware of what's going on in our community and who's taking some of the employees away from us. So thank you very much for that. So we have a motion. We have a second. I pontificated for two minutes and 37 seconds, and now I'm gonna ask Madam Clerk for a roll call, please.
Honorable Steve Green?
Absolutely, yes.
Honorable Senator Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Heschler?
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark is absent. Honorable Paul Buck?
Right.
Thank you, Carrie Janamislee. Again, thank you for all your efforts. We appreciate it. The next item is number four, Discussion Action Resolution Number 041819, Designating Signatory for USDA Rural Funding Application and Related Documents. Our presenter is Mrs. Tracy Burnett, our Grant Projects Coordinator.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. USDA recently redid their application process for large infrastructure projects, and it's now called RD Apply. It's all an online system. So with this, they do require a resolution authorizing our signatory authority. And as you can see by the resolution, I'm requesting that we authorize Manager Juan Fuentes to be that signatory authority. He'll have to do a really fun online process to get authorized, and then go to USDA and get the e-authorization through there as well. And this'll enable me to be able to process infrastructure applications. The one coming up that I'll be processing first will be for our water infrastructure, for Cook Street and all of the downtown water lines that are mentioned within the PER. That'll be an $8.9 million application request.
Do we know on that 8.9 million, is that, are you asking for 100% of a grant or is that gonna be a grant loan composition? Are we gonna have to do the same thing we did with the wastewater? We'll have to have our rates evaluated to see if we can pay back that portion of the loan, the debt portion of the loan?
Correct. It's normally a grant loan, and we will have to do a water rate evaluation. As far as the, the amount of grant versus the amount of loan, that, that really varies. I mean, we got the 3.8, I believe, of... I mean, we got the 3.8, I believe it was, for the first phase, which was a $915,000 loan. And our second phase was 4.8 with 700. It was a lot more than that, it was five, almost five, and we only had a $715,000 loan on that.
So 1.6 in debt roughly and millions and millions and outright. Here it is. Build us a new wastewater treatment plan. I, I just had one question and I brought this up, Tracy, at the, at our meeting yesterday. What happens, God forbid, if Juan becomes ill? He's in a coma and you need, is, is this just a one time, once the signature is?
Maybe, maybe I'm on vacation.
And he's unreachable in his coma. Let me rephrase that. He's scuba diving in the Caribbean. He's down 50 feet and you need his signature. That was a very bad example. You made me right. I apologize. Whoa, what was I thinking? So is this just a, once the city manager signs or does this thing, is that it? Or I mean, what, what happens if you need that and, and that person is not available? Do we need a backup signature, I guess?
We could maybe at the time, this is usually, this is going to be per application at this point with their new RD Apply. Within reason, I mean, if I submitted a whole bunch of applications within like a six month to eight month period, I think these are good for like up to a year. So every year it has to be renewed. So we're good for a year.
Very good. Any questions? I will stand for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number Zero Four, Eighteen Nineteen, Designating Signatory for USDA Rural Funding Application and Related Documentation. And that signature will be Manager Juan Fuentes, as presented by Tracy Burnett, our grant projects coordinator.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Whitehead. I made a second by Commissioner.
A second.
Baca. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Honorable Steve Green?
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Hesler?
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark is absent. Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Thank you, Carriage unanimously.
Thank you.
The next item is G Five. Don't go away. I think this is, oh no, this is Melissa. You guys are playing tactic here. Discussion Action Resolution Number Zero Five, Eighteen Nineteen, and Resolution Oh Five Dash A, Eighteen Nineteen, Approving the Required Community Development Block Grant, known as CDBG, Annual Certifications and Commitments, and Fair Housing Policy.
Good afternoon again. The city of, city of TRC is respectively requesting that the CDBG ordinance and certificates and commitments are approved. And the reason we are requesting this is, as you guys recall, we had a couple of stumbles with our CDBG where we had to request for an extension until the end of this month. And that was due to, we ran into a lot of problems where our water table was really high in the manholes because the, the BOR released water. So it caused us to delay our project. With that being said, because we went into July, the requirements of CDBG ensures that we have to have this requirement filed with the city just to comply with that extension. We're pleased to say that our CDBG has been completed. And last week, our DFA project manager came in and did an audit on the, on our finances and also on the inspection of the manholes and we were successful. So again, this is just procedures to close up the CDBG project.
Okay. Questions, concerns? I just have one informational question, if I may. Now that we've got a good audit, for the next CDBG, will we need the cog to be our fiscal agent or will we have to handle that in-house and save that $2,000 that they charge us?
Because we have to ask for an extension on the CDBG, we will have to, this fiscal year sit out. But from here on, we should not need a fiscal agent. With our audit findings that we've cleaned up, we're, DFA will let us be our fiscal agents again.
So you say we're ineligible to apply this year because we had that order?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. That hurts. They don't, they don't consider act of God something insurance policy.
Act of BOR.
Act of BOR. Yes, exactly. They think they're God. Okay, so thank you for that. I will stand for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number Oh Five, Eighteen Nineteen, and Resolution Oh Five A, Eighteen and Nineteen, Approving the Required Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Annual Certification and Commitments, and Fair Housing Policy, as presented by Melissa Torres, our finance director.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Whitehead and a second by Commissioner Hesler. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Madam Clerk?
Honorable Steve Green?
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Hesler?
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark is absent. Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Okay, Carriage unanimously. Thank you. Or, 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 G Six, Discussion Action, Resolution Number Oh Six, Eighteen Nineteen, Amending the Finance Policies and Procedures for the City of Truth to Consequences. Director Finance, Melissa Torres. Well done, madam. Boy, you never left.
Well, thank you. The Finance of the City of Truth or Consequences is respectively requesting additions and adjustments to the finance policy and procedures. As you guys recall, finance has taken over the accounts receivable, so we felt that this was the time to make the modifications. The majority of the modifications is adding Mayor Protem, city manager, and finance director to our accounts. And then also showing that the finance department payroll HR will be handling the dispersments of our payroll checks. And at this time, I stand for any questions.
Okay. Questions, concerns? Hearing none. I will stand for a motion for approval.
Mayor Green, I'd, I'd like to move that we approve Resolution Number Zero Six, Eighteen Nineteen, Amending the Finance Policies and Procedures for the City of Truth to Consequences, as presented by Finance Director Melissa Torres.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hesler, a second by Commissioner Baca. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Honorable Steve Green?
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Hesler?
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark is absent. Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
New business pushing on. Number One, Discussion Action, Reappointment of Bonnie Warwick to the Library Advisory Board for a three-year term. Presenter is Clerk Treasurer, Ms. Renee Canton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. As you can see from the Commission Action Form, Ms. Warwick served on the library board since 2001. They currently have two other vacancies so that they can continue to do business. We're requesting the reappointment of Ms. Bonnie Warwick, who is excited and willing to serve another term.
I love the last line. "I would like to continue to serve." Nice music. Any concerns, questions? Stand for a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the reappointment of Bonnie Warwick to the Library Advisory Board for a three-year term, as presented by Renee Canton, our city clerk.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Whitehead, a second by Commissioner Baca. Any further questions, concerns? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carriage unanimously. New business, Number Two, under H, Discussion Action, Accept the City of Truth to Consequences, Title Six Plan. Tracy Burnett, our grant projects coordinator, will be our presenter.
Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. Within your packet, you have a draft Title Six Plan. That's a boilerplate plan that was provided to us by NMDOT. In the past, this has been a requirement of NMDOT for a really long time. It's just recently, within the past few years, that they've started enforcing it through the Federal Highway Administration. This fiscal year, I want to start getting hard with any grants or funds that might be available through DOT, federal and state level, for repaving of our streets. And so I want to get the plan implemented and in place, so that's just one thing we already have done and out of the way. Our attorney has reviewed the plan. It's a lot of what we already enact within our policies, anti-discrimination, both throughout the employee level as well as the public level. Can I stand for any questions?
Any questions? Straightforward, I think. Stand for a motion, please.
Mayor Green, I move to accept the City of Truth to Consequences, Title Six Plan, as presented by Tracy Burnett, our grant projects coordinator.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hesler, a second by Commissioner Baca. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carriage. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Get us the money for the roads, please. New business, H Three, Discussion Update, Notification of All Current Member, Board Member Vacancies.
Thank you again, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. City Manager's been on me to really get boards and committees up to date and we've been really working on it, thinking outside the box. So I thought this would be a good opportunity to let you guys know where we are with it and to do it at the meeting so that the, who may be itching to volunteer for a city board might know about a vacancy. So if, if anybody is interested, all you need to do is contact the city clerk's office and I'm going to read through the current list of vacancies for you. On the Golf Course Advisory Board, they meet the first Wednesday of each month at 5:00 PM. We have one vacancy for a two-year term. And the Library Advisory Board, they meet on the last Monday of each month. And as I just mentioned previously, they have two vacancies for three-year terms. The Logist Tax Advisory Board meets quarterly on the fourth Thursday of the month at 5:30. They currently still have two vacancies for members in the tourism service. One of those will be a three-year term and the other will be a four-year term. And, and I want to add with the Logist Tax Advisory Board, we have all new members, a really great group to work with. And, and we're learning as we go along because we all had turnover, including myself, being involved with that. But it's a great group of people. The Planning and Zoning Commission, which has been mentioned a few times in the last few months, they, we currently have all, all the vacancies, five vacancies. The board has not been active since October 2013. I hear that we have at least one person interested, haven't received their application at this time. They are supposed to meet monthly and of course, no dates are scheduled at this time. So I, I did want to note that all the terms expire on June 30th. And any of the, any member of the board that is currently on that board will continue to hold that office until their successor is appointed and qualified. So with that, I'll open it to any questions you may have. This is just a notification for the commission, the city manager, and the public so they're aware of the vacancies we have.
Thank you. Questions? Can this information be posted in the paper as well? I, I think it should be.
We've published and posted plenty, but since I put more detail on it, we thought we would do it again and then, and then revise it up on the website and everything.
Ah, so it is up on the website.
Mm-hmm.
So what we might consider doing is in our utility bills, take this document that you have right here, Opportunities Available for Participation in Your Community, and, and send it out. It shouldn't cost us more than a couple millimeters of, of more postage because of the weight of a piece of paper and at least we can get it. I don't know, I mean, I, I do read when it comes into the house, you know, that'd be one way. And as long as we're talking, I'd like, I misspoke last month. I'd like to clear the record on this. On the planning and zoning, I said the reason that the Planning and Zoning Commission disbanded was because of some of the, some of the pressure that they were receiving from the public and they were, some of the commissioners were feeling uncomfortable. And I had heard that and I assumed that that was the reason. And that might have been true in the beginning, but I subsequently found out there were four remaining members of the P and Z. And I spoke to the chair, that's when I actually heard the truck blast the mufflers down there with January Roberts and Januaries. And I asked her, two of the members have moved out of town. Why did this commission disband? And it was what we heard during public comment, that they had done a lot of effort and energy to work on the two signs. One was the Los Arco sign and another was the sign a gentleman wanted right there on the old gas station corner there on Dayton Third. And they felt that the commission did not vote the way they wanted to vote. And so therefore, they thought, well, what's the sense of doing it? And that's why it was disbanded. So I did misspeak and I want to just set the record straight on that. But I do have a question for Manager Fuentes and maybe this, I think, was brought up yesterday. If we get three people for the P and Z, that's, do we have to change the ordinance that creates five people? I mean, how, how do we operate for the three-person board if we only get three people rather than not having this function at all? We hope that they all stay, show up to the meetings and three would work.
That's how we're working with the Logist Tax Department right now.
Yeah, so I mean, how, how do we change five to three or three plus?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if, if we go and, and this is something that I spoke into Susanna about amending the ordinance to have a three-member board. The county has a three-member board. In addition to not reducing it to a three-member board, you know, we, it might be, because we have sometimes hard, I mean, we've been advertising for, for volunteers for these boards, but you know, we don't get any, any applications. But since we do fund some of these sub-percentage applications, then why not require Main Street to put a representative, the chamber to put a representative? I mean, we fund them quite a bit.
Yeah.
And sometimes they are diverse enough where we can require them, you, you know, you appoint somebody and that could help us out as well. And that could at least fill those positions. So in those kind of boards, I mean, we, we can certainly do that and have one at large, three positions, one Main Street, one Chamber, and one to be at large. So just an idea.
Well, I think it's a good idea, especially because we want more people to get involved in government. I know in 2020, there are three positions that are up. And what a great opportunity for someone who wants to get involved, to, to get involved on a board, you know, where they really understand governance and how it works and things such as that. And that could be, you know, I've always envisioned our boards as kind of our training round for, for people to get involved in the committee, in committees and in boards so that when that opportunity, they want to serve in a different capacity and they want to run for office, they have an understanding of how it all works and they, they didn't have, they participated in it. So I would not like numbers to disqualify us from filling some of these boards.
So Mayor, if, if there's consensus, then we'll craft the ordinance and bring it to the commission.
Okay. I don't think we can take a vote on it because it's just Discussion Update, but I think that that might be an interesting way to take a look at this bill this, you know, it's almost five years now. The last meeting was November of 2013 and we're down there August of 2018. So, you know, let's fill these positions and get some people, more, more people involved in, in, in the community and government life. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Um, okay. We did it. Reports.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I just.
Manager Fuentes.
Yes, one quick item to report. I believe Commissioner Baca had been receiving a number of calls about the water pressure on Ralph Edwards Park. And in our staff, our Parks Department, our Water Department, they kind of worked to try to figure out if that was the, the cause of it. It appears that something in the system, we might have a number of valves that are closed because the, the system at Ralph Edwards is small enough where it shouldn't have that big of an impact. It appears that it is. So, you know, we're going to have to kind of really look at, Susanna did provide me a, a map that shows all the lines, that shows all the valves. So we're going to have to, you know, once we have the new director on board, come up with a plan so that we can identify, locate all of the valves that are in the system in that area and exercise and make sure either they're open or what is causing this. Because I, I do feel that the park having that much of an impact is actually a concern to me because it's, it's, it's not that big of a park, but it has an impact on, on an area that's a mile away. That's, that shouldn't be the case. So, so again, we'll, we'll be working on that, you know, once the new director's on board.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
City Attorney.
I beg your pardon. I was going to say, you reported anything. That's why I wanted you. I knew that.
You knew that, huh?
Mayor, Mayor Protem.
Um, I do have one comment. I do have two comments, really. But I know, do know that there might be a few contracts that are out there that are up for renewal, possibly September, October, November. I want to make sure that we stay on top of those contracts so that they're submitted in a timely manner, that we don't have to extend times to get these in. So I just want to make sure that those are, are continued to stay on top of. And the other thing. to stay on top of. Um, and the other thing, I'm proud to say that I just got back from the Sierra County Senior Olympics, which was held July eighteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and eighteen, in Albuquerque, New Mexico. And I brought home the gold in, um, what did I bring home the gold in? Oh, bowling, uh, in doubles. My doubles partner and I brought home the gold. But I also would like to recognize, uh, our outstanding seniors that participated. Uh, our group coordinator was Jackie McDaniel. Our president of the senior Olympics is Robbie McFarland. She used to be Robbie Finney. And our treasurer is Elena Delatorre. The events that brought home awards were Robbie McFarland. She brought home the gold in air rifle. Um, bowling, our team, I did bowl with the team, which consisted of myself, Elena Delatorre, Wendy Burdette, and Dorothy Halderman. We brought home third place, which was bronze. Um, javelin, Robbie McFarland brought home the gold. In bowling, I brought home the gold along with my team partner, or my, um, doubles partner, Elena Delatorre. Dorothy Halderman brought home the bronze, third place in soccer. Singles, bowling men, Randy Burdette brought, brought home fourth. And mixed double, Wendy and Randy brought home second, which was silver. We also had John Bush, who, um, who participated. And then we had Kevin Zalinka, who brought home several medals. He brought home three goals in frisbee, archery, and he also brought home two silvers. So congratulations to all the participants. We had a great time. And besides that, we qualify to bowl in Nationals next year, which is in Albuquerque. So I'm real excited about that because Nationals consist of everyone from around the United States.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
The city has a tight budget. Can we have that gold to melt down?
You could keep it. No.
Well earned, obviously. Commissioner, uh, I'm going to, uh, uh, we have had not a chance, and I apologize. Uh, I, I want to give the chief, our new police chief, an opportunity, uh, to, uh, step forward to the, to microphone, introduce himself. I know his name, and I think all the commissioners do, but, uh, we, we want to officially welcome the chief, and then we'll continue with the commissioners' reports.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager. Uh, I'm really honored to be here. I've been, uh, three weeks now, and, uh, already been in, with some ordeal already. Uh, you notice, my officer was up at the platform. I was, he saved me a hundred dollars. I was going to get a high chair, which I normally do in a commission meetings. That's the inexpensive way. He said, we'll, we'll put, place them up there from now on. I think they need to have oversight, and it is a deterrent effect. It's been proven that an officer in a, in a commission meeting or a council meeting, higher than the, the group is much, uh, greater than just sitting in the audience. So unless you disagree, he'll be up there or she'll be up there. Uh, y'all, the, the newspapers were, were pretty clear about my past and where I've been and what I've done, and, uh, I don't think I need to go over that. But, uh, once again, I'm really honored to be here. You know, I've been in military, retired army. I've been in law enforcement, thirty-eight years. Twenty-eight as a police chief, believe it or not. And this is a record, six states as a chief. This is the last one. This is the last rodeo, definitely. And, um, I'm working right now. I've talked to all the commissioners but one. Uh, Commissioner Clark's not available. Uh, so I've had a sit-down and getting your ideas and your advice, and it's been great. And I've been out there, must have talked fifteen or twenty state holders, Chamber of Commerce, judges, uh, the sheriff, and I had a great meeting. Uh, he's really glad that I'm on board, um, working together, and that's what we need to do. Um, I'm working on, as, as Commissioner Heschler and the city manager, the mayor, I work, when I take an assessment of a, of new city, I do, it's four phases. Phase one is an introduction to the, to my staff, which I did, uh, several weeks back before I even got hired, before I officially got hired. Phase two is my assessment of operations, which I'm doing now. It's about thirty to forty-five days. And then the next phase, once, once the city manager approves everything I've, you know, recommended, it might not be anything, but it might be some improvements, I go into the implementation phase, which I start, you know, rubber beats the road. And once that's finished, around the ninety-first day, you know, it might be ten days, plus or minus, I, what I call the last stage, which is refinement, you know, tweaking things, what y'all might need to look, be looked at again and so forth. Um, you know, my overall mission, I have my back to you. My overall mission as, as the police chief, in my opinion, is to provide the, uh, leadership for the delivery of law enforcement services to our community in such a manner that it positively satisfies their needs and their priorities. And I do that not alone. The staff I have, you know, we, we're working together and we, we try to get there. And my overall feeling is, our, our job is to enhance the overall quality of life of, of T R C by providing law enforcement services, preventing and controlling crime and, uh, reducing the fear of crime. So that's, that's the big issue, and that's the big, uh, mission. Um, Mr. Fuentes and I talked very, uh, had a big meeting initially. I wanted to get some goals and his ideas of where we need to go. And everything he mentioned, I knew from the interviews and just reading about it. Uh, Commissioner Heschler has so much experience in law enforcement, believe it or not. Our, my boss, he's got a degree in criminal justice. That's great. And, uh, his goals for me, it's logical. Number one, develop community-based, uh, policing program, community policing. And we've heard it in many different ways, but community-based policing is going beyond working harder and faster towards working smarter through long-range community-based problem solving. In other words, preventing crimes from occurring in the first place, not just send a car, make an arrest, incarcerate, which is the old way. We want to prevent those crimes from happening in the first place, and as a last resort, making an arrest. And that's just the opposite of many, many departments. They think they're going to arrest theirself to success, and that's not the way to go. Bad guys do have to go to jail at times, but primarily, we should prevent the crime from happening in the first place. Another goal he set is to developing a proactive partnership with the community. And that means more than just waving and shaking hands. It means getting out and working with the community to determine what their needs and priorities are, and that's what I'm going to try to do. Third one is he wants to enhance code enforcement operations. We have a code enforcement issue, and I just need to make sure we're on the right track, and we continue to do that. Believe it or not, I mean, I've heard the questions in the interview, the, the broken windows principle. You address minor problems, and it reduces urban light. Things start falling into place. Take care of the little things, and the big things fall into place. Code enforcement is the magic bullet to reduce crime and the fear of crime, believe me. And we're going to get there. And the last is animal control. And we've got a new unit, uh, worked with animal control before, and, um, we just need to get it in the right direction to make sure we stay there. And, uh, that's one of my goals. And with that, I, I'll leave you with saying, I've mentioned this before, if you need, if you want to describe Ray and Larrigan, I'm fair, I'm firm, firm, and I'm friendly. And that's, that's just me. So, uh, with that, any questions?
Few questions. Just a suggestion, Manager Fuentes, I don't know if you can do this. Thank you. Is that, um, I'm wondering if we should make the chief, uh, as one of, uh, as we hear from our city attorney and our city manager, uh, maybe as, uh, to put down under, uh, under reports, because I think the public, it's really, really important, uh, that the public has a sense of what's going on, what's happening.
Right.
This is one of the biggest problems we hear is, well, we don't know what's going on. We'll read the newspaper, listen to, you know, the radio station. But I, I think that, and also, I, I think I heard Manager Fuentes correctly, that you were willing to not fill one position so we could do what we just did in the budget. So I want to thank you and your team.
Broke my heart, but I knew it.
I, I understand. I'm sure it did. But I want to thank you and your team for, for looking at a bigger picture. Looking at a bigger picture besides, not only are you responsible in looking for your own department, but you're looking out for T, Truth or Consequences. And I just want to thank you personally-
Yes, sir.
-for giving up that one position.
Thank you, Mayor.
Please, I only get to ask for three more next week, but we're going to hold.
No, I think, uh, we're bare bones as it is.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Commissioners, uh, Chief, can you share with the commission the idea that you spoke to Francis about on the radio program?
Oh, yes.
Because I think that, that addresses-
It aligns right with-
That question.
It aligns, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm kind of an out-there kind of leader, and I've already talked to, uh, Commissioner Luna, Publicity Luna, whatever title I know. She's got many titles. But, uh, she's really enthusiastic about, uh, everywhere I've been, I have had a radio program. And if they had a television show, I did a television show a week. So, um, August the sixth, we're kicking off the chief's update. It's going to be a radio show where I present, uh, what's going on in the police community, crime prevention tips, and she's just happy about it. So I've done that before. It's going to be, uh, she, she'll put it on many different times.
Right.
But it might go fifteen minutes, and, uh, I might interview people periodically. It might be you, Mayor. It might be my boss, uh, the DA, uh, Commissioner Heschler, whatever. But I, I want to interview people and, you know, ask them, what's their role and what their, you know, what's their visions. But the community loves that, and I'm starting that August the sixth, on one oh one point nine.
Well, thank you for that. And Francis, if you're listening, Vice Chair Luna, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great, great idea. Great idea.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Heschler? It's tough to talk. You don't have a television program? No, there you go.
It's your commercial.
Commissioner Baca? Uh, and I think I, um, just want to, once again, um, I, I think Mayor Pro Tem should stand up, take that yellow T-shirt, so our reporters representing the Herald and the Sentinel can take a great picture of that. We're going to have some people up there in Albuquerque cheering for you next year.
Cheering for me next year?
Absolutely. It is. It's a great-
Don't forget your medal.
Oh, don't forget my medal?
Yeah. Put them around your neck. Absolutely.
Next year, you'll be a seasoned senior Olympian.
Yes. Hold it. I told you how to be over fifty years old to be a senior Olympian.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you snuck it under the wire. Forty-seven years old. Okay. If there's no other business, I will need a motion to clear the hall, and we're going to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session under J one, threat and pending litigation, City versus Ron Fan pursuant to ten fifteen one eight seven. J two, threat and pending litigation, City versus McGeeche pursuant to ten fifteen one eight seven. And J three, threat and pending litigation, City versus Ashbaugh pursuant to ten fifteen one eight seven.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead. I need a second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Baca. Um, roll call, please.
Honorable Steve Green?
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Ross Heschler?
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark? Is absent. Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
Okay. And, uh, I am glad we have set this. I'll wait till, uh, I will need a, uh, a motion, uh, for someone to, we're out now in general session, and I need someone to stipulate.
Mr. Mayor, I stipulate that, uh, only the matters of J one, threat and pending litigation, City versus Ron Fan, and J two, threat and pending litigation, City versus McGeeche pursuant to ten fifteen one eight seven was discussed and no action was taken.
I have, uh, a disclaimer, uh, by Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead. Uh, now that we are back in, uh, open session, is there any motion that anyone would like to make? I will make a motion, uh, on threatened or pending litigation, City versus McGeeche, to authorize staff and legal to move forward, uh, for a lawsuit.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. I will need a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session under J three, threat and pending litigation, City versus Ashbaugh pursuant to ten fifteen one eight seven.
I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead. Can I have a roll call, please?
Honorable Steve Green?
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Ross Heschler?
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark is absent. Honorable Paul Baca?
Aye.
We are now in executive session. Concerns? Over the last couple of years, I've-
Stipulate that in executive session, only the matters under J three, threat and pending litigation, City versus Ashbaugh pursuant to ten fifteen one eight seven was discussed and no action was taken.
Uh, thank you for that. And I'd just like to have the record show that because of the potential appearance of a conflict of interest, that Commissioner Paul Baca left the room before we got into, uh, detailed discussion on this particular agenda item. Anything else? We are adjourned.
Yay.
Thank you. Now, you want to see what I wrote last-